County Board meeting, Georgia, we have a flag pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure. Commissioner Benoit?
Here.
Commissioner Heinem?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
He's excused. Approve or amend the agenda?
Miss Chair, two items for you to add. Our county attorney has an item regarding a vacant position. If you could please add that right after the consent agenda, or right after consent. You also have an item on non-union health insurance. If we could please add that as the last item under county administrator, the last item under county administrator. And, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to note that as we get to county administrative items, if there are folks here who have agenda items that are afterwards and you'd like to move administrative items later, you know, so you can get the folks that are here, totally fine, you know, don't, if you'd like to do that, so.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
That's what I would recommend.
Yeah. So, move for approval of the amended agenda, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Most of them made in second to approve the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. County Board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes the Robert Rules of Order for its meeting, so please obtain the board's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reviewed, reserved for open forum segment of the public hearing. However, public comments on other agenda items may be allowed at the board's discretion. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones and turn your phones to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum. Matt Fountain is first on the list. Yep, good. Matt, go to the...
Good morning.
Morning.
My name.
My name's Matthew Fountain. I'm a resident here in Benton County. My son and I purchased a property back in July at seven six five five Jasmine Loop Northwest. It was, used to be Fat Joe's Racecraft. It was a rather well-known, I guess, automotive shop, for lack of a better way of putting it. We own a tree service. We had been doing business with them. We purchased the property basically for the shop so we could work on some of our equipment for our company. About a month after getting it, I think July 2nd, we closed on it. Oh, that's my son Andrew right there, by the way. He's one of the, going to be the owner here pretty soon of it. And so, we got a letter from zoning stating that we can't operate a business there due to the fact that it's zoned residential. When we purchased the property, first thing I did was contact or look at the tax statement, and under the assessor's thing, it's done as residential slash commercial land and building. I feel a reasonable person as myself, I'm not going to go further than that because I believe that the county knew that a business was being operated from there. So, upon purchasing that, then getting first letter, I contacted Ms. Ackman in the zoning department, and we had several discussions about this, and she said it is purely for zoning. Very few businesses, like a daycare or something, could be run there. I said, well, is there a way I could appeal this process or something like that? And she said there wasn't. So, we reached out to a couple people. I then contacted her again and said, well, I believe, could I put in for a variance so I could get in front of the Board of Adjustment? Because we made a very sizable financial thing into this business. And I want to emphasize, and I told her also, we bought this just to work on our vehicles in that shop. That shop is a fifty-five by eighty, has four lifts in it, and it's, again, it's perfect for our business. There will be no wood storage, wood processing, anything of that. We have another property that we do all that at. We dump all our waste at Burskies, excavating. So, I'm feeling that we're, you know, that I'd like to be heard further. She said, I said, well, could we do a variance? Could we look at a conditional use permit? Any sort of factor, nothing. We asked, well, what if we dropped off, say, a variance package? She said, I'll refuse it. I find it hard to believe that this county is going to, number one, pass up on the revenue, number two, pretty much shut down a small business with guys trying to make a go at it for that. And I mean, I'd be willing to talk about any stipulations, what size vehicle could be parked there, putting up a fence, another building, anything of that sort. And then we also had a secondary thing about, we put down some crushed gravel, and it went beyond the impervious service. So, then we removed that. We took our wheel out and walked around, so we believe we're under the twenty-five percent. But I really felt that we haven't been treated fairly so far by the zoning, at least upon being heard further on this. So, we received two letters from her, and now we just got contacted by the county attorney's office saying that we're, you know, that further legal action can be taken. That's the last thing I want. I was a postmaster in Rice for sixteen years. I like this community. It's a good community, and we want to contribute to it. But we don't want to do anything illegal, excuse me, illegal anyways. So, I was wondering, can you guys propose something to me? Am I allowed to put in for a variance? I find it hard that somebody could just deny it out the window.
We do have the expert here.
Far from that, Mr. Chair. Maybe, maybe, Matt, if I could, and, Mr. Chair, maybe I'd suggest we have a conversation with staff, and then yourself, or Roxanne, or somebody reaches back to him at that point, because typically, we don't have the back and forth at the open forum.
Yep, exactly. But I appreciate it.
But I think we've heard that, and I think now we can take it from there and have discussion with staff. And I always like to say the other half of the story.
Yep.
Right? We've got your half.
Every coin has two sides.
And then expect somebody to respond back to you, hopefully shortly.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. Have a good day.
Yep, thanks, Matt. Mike Levenduski.
Good morning. Mike Levenduski, Alberta Township. Mr. Chair, I, you know, some of this might be able to be answered when the site director has his time. Just some questions on the parking issue for the new government center. You and I spoke briefly, and I think we have an understanding on some of it, and I guess I understood that, at this time, it doesn't appear that Benton County's looking to purchase any additional lands adjacent to the property for any use, for parking or whatever. But the question is, if this building, or the old part of this building remains, and I know it's kind of in the works yet, but if the old building remains, could one assume that the parking here would go with the building for employees? Has that been discussed already, or can somebody refresh?
I don't, Monty?
Sure. Well, we've had discussions about possibly converting the old nineteen oh one courthouse into a parking space. And, of course, we would continue using the space which is behind here on the north side of our building. So, but that is, that is, that's the plan at this point.
The plan would be to keep the parking here for employees. Additional parking by the new center would be for the public.
This, on-street parking, right?
On-street parking?
Yeah, yep, yep.
If, if this building doesn't get raised, or if someone purchases, I'm not sure if that's been decided yet, correct?
Well, there's been lots of discussions about the nineteen oh one courthouse, and I think the general consensus of the, of the board is, it's not really salvageable, and probably is best suited for, for parking space. So, the rest from the annex this way, that's, I think, still up for discussion. We're going to be meeting very soon to start talking about options, so.
So, likely would be that the building would be raised versus sold?
To be determined.
To be determined.
Yeah, I think, again, we're focusing on the nineteen oh one courthouse is, is the one that's the least salvageable of the, of the three sections. Yep.
And if that was raised, then that would be parking for employees, and then they would, okay.
Yeah, I think it'd be parking for the public and employees. You know, obviously, we want to make sure that the public has the closest available, most convenient parking, so, yeah.
And I don't recall how many, do we know the count for the spaces on the new site for public?
Which site?
The new construction site.
There's no allowance for parking on the site.
There's no parking on the site? It's all street parking?
Simply, it'd be street parking, yeah. Yep. If you, if you look at the site plan, there really is very little space actually left for parking. The, a lot of the open space on the south side will be consumed by a sedimentation pond. So, there's really very little space on this, on the lot itself for parking. Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Consent agenda, we have items one through six.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion's been made in second for items one through six. Any questions or want anybody, want anything pulled?
I just have some general questions on three, four, and five.
Okay. You gonna pull three, four, and five?
Sure. Yes.
Look, can you amend your?
Sandy's here, yep.
I'll amend the motion. Need to pull three, four, and five.
I'm amendable on that second.
It's okay, we, we got a motion to approve items one, two, and six, and pull three, four, and five. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Commissioner Benoit, number three, we'll start with.
Actually, it's a general question over all of them, basically. Sandy, I just have a quick question. In some of our meetings that we, or some of the meetings I've been attending, there's been a lot of talk about fraud that's going on. How do, these are contracts. How do we get the names of these places? Are they coming out of the cities? Are, kind of, just a general?
So, when they're on a consent agenda, they're, they're, they're places we've already contracted with, so they are not new vendors. But we do have a policy as well about, with, with various points on it, of the research we do on new vendors, as well as existing and on the amounts of money that we contract for, and then we do audits and reviews. So, we do keep an eye on all of our contracts.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Yes.
I'll, I'll make a motion to move three, four, and five.
Second?
Motion's been made in second to approve consent agenda, consent agenda items three, four, and five. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. At this time, we'll go to the county attorney.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you may have heard, Mr. Leggett has formally resigned. It's been a couple years since he's been gone on military leave. He's formally resigned, sent me a text on October 6th apologizing that it took so long. He was apparently deployed on September 15th, and then more recently, October 12th, sent in a formal letter of resignation. His email to me indicated he intends not to return to Benton County, and he's going to remain on active duty for a minimum of four years, and understands that we need this formal letter to fill his vacancy. So, since we had asked essentially to overfill it quite some time ago, Mr. Hedley asked that I come back and, and let you know what was going on, and then asked to fill that position. As you know, we're already filling Ms. Jansen's position, so our intent would just be to interview essentially for two positions.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Yep, second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the request from the county attorneys to fill the position.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I think we're still liable for another three years, though, in case he doesn't do us four-year commitment.
I think there is something that HR had spoke about that.
If I may, yes, I want to attribute some research to Shannon and Emily, and they tell us that the employee does retain reinstatement rights even though the employee has resigned up to that five years of active duty service. So, I just want to make sure that's, that's fully disclosed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you've heard that? Any other questions?
I'm fine with that, too.
I assume, I assume when offering a new position, that'll be informed to the new person. There's that potential.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure how HR goes about that. I, I don't know the answer to that, to be honest.
Well, it's on the record now, so.
Yep, yep. I just wanted that disclosed, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monty Hedley.
Pete is here with an update, Mr. Chair. It's all yours, Pete.
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Pete Filippi, Contiguity Group, construction manager on the project across the street. So, a quick update this morning on, a little bit on the budget side of things, and then I'll talk about the progress on the site and what you can kind of expect to see. Budget-wise, we're early in the project. We did get through our soil remediation, which I think reported on last month to you. Everything went well. We're under the budget that we encapsulated before, early on. Should tame itself out a little over a hundred thousand dollars, and we had two hundred in that line item, so hopefully we move free and clear, which I expect we should at this point, being that the site's entirely backfilled. We do have five proposal requests out now that GLT has issued, minor in nature at this point in the process, but few things we're cleaning up on the site. And upon approval of those pricings, a subsequent change order will be issued. So, with that, budget looks very healthy at this point. So, there's no questions in regard to the budget. Just move on to the site happenings. Currently, all the foundation work is presently in, backfilled. You'll see some activity out there today, and that is Kim and Dirt work moving the excess stockpile off-site to provide a little bit more space for us to move around. LJ Plumbing and Heating is on-site doing the deep underground sewer work within the building. Tomorrow, or later this week, Johnson Nelson Masonry will mobilize and start bringing up a couple of the elevator shafts and stair tower for which we have steel bearing on. And we have steel scheduled to start showing up here later part of next week. I can't remember how many trucks are coming in, if it's ten, eleven trucks. And then Brightbach Construction will be shortly thereafter to start to put the steel, start to erect the steel. Did take a nice call from Eric Johnson, who's K Johnson Concrete on Friday, and just wanted to let me know that this was the most well-coordinated project he's been on in the last two years. The foundation work went in seamlessly, and he just wanted to get some positive feedback. So, we're moving in the right direction with things. We enter this phase of construction where we're a little bit weather-dependent, and we'll see how things progress here as we move on to the next month or so. So, that's kind of the happenings. By next month, you'll start to see some steel coming out of the ground. So, things have been progressing very nicely. At the same time, I know we're starting to kind of stick our feet in the water a little bit on acquisition of some furniture and those AV systems that we had budgets for, and that process will soon evolve itself a little bit more with some of your input. So, just wanted to give you a quick update and see if there are any other questions.
Mr. Chair, Pete, what do you see for timeline for those RFPs that GLT's putting out?
I, matter of fact, I talked with Evan as of yesterday on the furniture RFP. I think he's real close on that, and then he was going to check back on the AV component, and I think that's shortly thereafter. We did have conversation, you know, some of that stuff's over a year out, but it's nice to get that stuff resolved. The AV component will be, of course, a little bit more first-come, first-served. As far as our needs on-site goes, we just want to make sure that at least before ceilings and things go in, we've got all the conduit and wiring figured away for those pathways to the various rooms, and we're providing the AV and the security side of stuff, so.
And are you able to speak to what the other couple RFPs would be?
What's that?
Are you able to speak to what the other RFPs would be? You've talked about AV and furniture. I think you listed out five of them.
Yeah, basically, it's going to come down to two RFPs, and the furniture component will be to get a vendor on board to help through the design process with that. And those will be brought back to, of course, the county board here for subsequent review and approval. And acquisition of that furniture vendor will then help us through the process of identifying the workstations, the furniture components, the tables, chairs, desks. And some of that is important as well. Like I said, a lot of those cubicles have power and data feeds to them as well, so we want to make sure that the holes in the floor, going up the second floor, and even slab-on-grade are well-coordinated. So, we're hitting the center of these desks that have power and data to them. At the same time, the AV security side of stuff will go out, and once again, we'll start to vet through that process to make sure that the system's in place, i.e. county boardroom, that microphones and the speakers and monitors and things are well-positioned, and that we have the proper wires and roughens in the walls. So, subsequently, when those systems are ready to be installed, we're not chasing wires down walls that we've already got sheet rock painted and such, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time this morning.
Mr. Chair, Amanda's here with your next item.
Okay.
Good morning, County Board.
Good morning.
In front of you this morning, you have an attached letter from the Initiative Foundation requesting appointments to our Region 7W Governing Committee. This, we've had previous conversations at previous board meetings about the Region 7W entity, and this morning we're requesting that the county board consider appointments to the Governing Committee. We are looking for an at-large business community representative and a staff appointee, which I have volunteered that position out of ease for the county. And then also, a third appointee would be an elected official. Oftentimes, the elected official is a county, county board member to serve on that committee. We are hoping to have all appointments from all of the different counties appointed in October so that we have at least time to meet at least one time this year yet. So, the business-at-large community representative, we had a discussion at the BEP Board meeting this last month, and it was recommended that Tim Ruder, one of our board members, serve on that committee as the at-large business community member. So, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to the county board to discuss and have conversations about who you would like to have serve on this regional 7W committee.
Mr. Chair, I, I have a question. You know, we all have different districts. I'm just wondering what district would make sense to serve on this board? Would it be someone that is in the fully, you know, your district, or, you know, I, I'm just, I'm throwing that out there.
Well, I, I think with Mr. Ruder sort of volunteering, I mean, we, you know, it took some, little bit of conversation to get him to do this. I think that's a really good position that we got there.
Oh, yeah.
So, that'll be like the contact that comes back to the BEP Board meeting along with Amanda. So, I don't really think that there's a district that really needs to be representative. I think, I think it's pretty much just a county board person that can...
Mr. Chair, Amanda, a couple questions. What's the time commitment?
Um, yeah, I foresee, you know, one meeting this year, roughly an hour, an hour and a half. And then next year, we'll probably have one or two meetings, just kind of getting the ball rolling. We have to get the application approved yet this year. So, there is going to be at least one initial meeting this year yet. So, that's, the time commitment is maybe roughly three to six hours.
Okay. And then the second question is, does it make sense to have an alternate or two alternate county board members?
I would think so. That would be a really great option.
Yeah, I just think this might be a good opportunity where somebody goes and then somebody else goes next time type of thing. That's just a thought.
Yep. We would like to have at least one appointee from the board as an elected official to be the official appointee, and then if we need an alternate, we certainly can.
Does that system allow for an alternate?
I don't have, we haven't developed the bylaws yet for this entity, but, you know, we can have that conversation with the Initiative Foundation.
I just, I know what happens with schedules is all of a sudden.
Yeah. It's a good recommendation, actually.
It's up to you, Scott. It doesn't matter to me.
I'm happy to go, to do it or be an alternate. I would like some involvement potentially, but.
Right, yeah.
I, I can take it or leave it.
Well, my opinion would be then to put you, and then if they have an alternate, I'd like to be the alternate.
Okay.
We can do that. Point, Scott Johnson. Commissioner Johnson.
I'll second.
Motion's been made to appoint Commissioner Johnson, and if they allow an alternate, we'll turn to Commissioner Heinem.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, just a clarification, Amanda, do you need a motion to approve yourself and the other one?
Yes.
So, if we could, do you need them separately, or could we?
Um, I think one motion. So, in, in the action requested in your staff memo, it lists me as the appointee, as a staff appointee.
I'll reconsider my motion.
Do it all, right.
And then I'll make another motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint BEP Executive Man Olet as a staff appointee for the Region 7W Governing Committee. Appoint Tim Ruder as an at-large business community representative, and appoint board member Commissioner Johnson as a county representative, and if possible or allowed, an alternate for Commissioner Heinem.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to do what he just said. I won't go through it now. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, Mitch, I know my personal policy item is pretty lengthy. So, I see Troy is already here. Perhaps if you would like to jump to his item?
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
Right at nine twenty-five, too. Look at that.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As you're all aware, we have a statutory requirement to provide medical care to inmates in Benton County Jail. Over the last four years, we've been satisfying that requirement with a contract with Advanced Correctional Health, or ACH. That contract expires at the end of this year, at the end of 2025. We've entered into negotiations with ACH and come up with a new three-year agreement to continue this relationship to provide medical services in our jail through the end of 2028. You'll note in the contract that the price for our medical services for 2026 is a 2.5% cost increase, and then we agreed to a 4% cost increase in 2027 and 2028. This also takes two contracts that we currently have, one for the medical services, one for the electronic medical records, and combines them into one contract to avoid some duplication and make things a little bit more streamlined. So, be happy to field any questions the board may have.
Troy, I guess, I feel that the 4% for the two outlying years is pretty hefty. I mean, I would, you know, we're in labor negotiations now, and we're kind of holding back on the three-year because of the, you know, the state of the economy and everything like that. So, I mean, and then they go, you know, 4%, I'm the two... So I mean, and then they go, you know, 4% on the two outline years. Is there an option that we could look at that or is that pretty much what they offered?
Uh, so this is what they offered, and that's what, you know, we were able to get for negotiation.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess it's up to the discretion of the Board if, if you think that's an acceptable alternative. If, uh, if the motion fails, we'd go back and see what else we figure out.
Mr. Chair, Sheriff, can you give kind of a broad overview? As I read through here, it's, uh, on an average daily population of forty.
Yes.
Right? So, and then if you go more than ten more, there's additional dollars.
Correct.
The other problem is, is if your ADP goes to twenty-five or thirty, we're still paying the minimum of two ninety-five and then the outline years. Is that the correct statement?
So the contract adjusts both up and down.
Okay.
So currently, our contract has, has a baseline of an ADP of fifty. So we've been getting credit back, uh, for quite a while because our ADP hasn't approached that. This adjusts it to a more, a more typical ADP of what we've seen in the last couple of years of forty. And yes, if we have more than forty, we'd be paying extra. If we have less than forty, we'd get a credit back for that.
And would you say of your inmates, if you have, let's just say you have forty, are all of those receiving medical care?
Well, they all get.
I realize that can change, but I mean, overall, is it typical that they would all receive medical care?
They all get evaluated. But as far as those that actively take medical care, not all of them do. I think a significant portion of them do because unfortunately, when they come to us, they typically haven't taken very good care of themselves, especially, uh, the mental health, um, that we provide. There's probably at least a quarter, maybe a third that are on those, are on those rolls to be seen.
I mean, the, the simple math on forty inmates is seventy-four hundred dollars per inmate for the first year. And that's why I ask if they're actually using it. And others probably use two or three others' time.
Certainly.
Okay.
Any other questions?
It's just another expense, another healthy expense.
Yeah, that's passed on to the counties. I mean, it's a hefty expense. It's no doubt about it.
I mean, I, I agree with Commissioner Pop, the 4% in the outline years. Is there a way to do a one-year and look at it again? Or are they giving us a break the one-year because of the outline years?
I, so the, the reduction in costs in the first year is a result of going from that fifty ADP down to the forty ADP. There wasn't really a discussion about, we're going to give you a break on, on the first year for signing the second two. You know, the 4%, when you talk about medical inflation, that, that's a pretty reasonable number. And that's, that's why we brought it here. So again, I, I leave it up to the discretion of the Board. If, uh, if this doesn't meet with your approval, we'll go back and we'll try again. You know, our, our alternative is that we would have to, you know, if we don't contract with ACH, there really aren't many other players in the game. There might be one other player that's starting to work into Minnesota. Otherwise, we're looking at, we would have to find a doctor and nurses and have our own staff. There's a lot of larger counties in the state that are going that way, but that, you know, that presents real challenges to Benton County to bring out a medical director of our own and hire our own nurses.
Mr. Chair, I, I think we looked at that quite a while back about bringing on a nurse from Centrica or whatever at that time. And that was quite a few years ago, and that was a healthy expense, too. And then you, and then it was hard to get them on weekends, and that was the biggest problem.
Weekend problem, I could.
That was the problem we had.
Yeah, is, is there an opportunity, like, because we're not a large county, that we could pair with another county that's having the same issues?
I've not heard of any kind of co-op arrangements like that. I think that, that's certainly a possibility, but I, I think that would, we'd be breaking some new ground there.
Yeah, and it would take some time to get to that point.
It would.
Mr. Chair, Sheriff, I know it addresses additional ADPs here. I think it just gives an example of ten, but are they, you said they're currently giving you credits now, so we're on, we're under fifty, we're with fifty ADP now, but you've been receiving credits because our ADP is at thirty-five.
Correct.
So are you getting a credit for each individual ADP or is it a block?
So we, we get, we get a credit each month issued back to us.
So what you're actually using?
Correct.
So you paid for fifty, but if you only use thirty-five that month, you're getting a credit for the fifteen?
Correct.
Okay, on a monthly basis?
I believe it's a mon, it's monthly or quarterly, but yes, we get a credit for that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, in the future, Troy, do you see the jail population going up above forty? I mean, you know, we're looking, I know hypothetically, but, but we also have to look at, is it going to be at fifty next year? Okay, now that's going to raise it ten more inmates.
You know, I, I think our jail population is very dependent upon the political winds that blow down in St. Paul. When you have, uh, an executive branch that's controlled by a party that very much favors not putting people in jail, that's the results you're going to get out of the system. You have a legislature that passes laws that favor that outcome. You have an executive branch that puts people on commissions, that sets sentencing guidelines that favor that outcome. So absent a change at the, at least the executive level, I think that you're going to continue to see an ADP approximately where we're at. I think that we've kind of hit, kind of hit, um, a level here that's going to remain unless there's some type of political change.
Mr. Chair, I think the bigger question is if you feel four percent for the outline years is a real number because, yeah.
Mr. Chair, the medical field has gotten very expensive.
Right.
And it's going to keep getting very expensive.
I'd be more inclined to do a one-year, but that's just my initial thought. It's, it's the dilemma of, you know, if it comes in at six percent, then you wish you'd done it, right? So.
Correct.
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, would you like to see this go back and see if we can't negotiate for a three percent for the second year? And a three percent for the third year or a three percent for the second year, four percent for the third year?
I, I guess what I'd like to see potentially is for it to go back and see if we can come up with a percentage that's agreeable for signing a three-year contract.
Yeah.
You know, we're giving them three years. Now, they may look at it and say, okay, we've answered that with a four percent fix in the outline years. I understand that, but I don't know that we know that yet from what I'm hearing.
Okay.
What, what's your timeline, Sheriff?
Well, our contract, as I said, expires the end of this year, so we have some time to work with.
I guess I would agree with that. I guess my thought is let's have another conversation with them and see if we can negotiate a solid three-year. If we're going to do a three-year, I'm a little leery of that, but I do recognize that they may want to fix that percent. I, I understand that. So I, that's just my thought.
I would agree.
You would agree with that, too, Commissioner Bonnet?
I think the consensus is to go back and see if you can negotiate. If a three-year is going to do, we'd like to see a little less percentage on years two and three.
All right, very good.
And we'll, we'll entertain it as soon as you bring her back. Thank you, Sheriff.
I'll be back. Thanks.
Let's move on to Christine. We'll come back to Monty.
Okay.
All right.
Good morning.
Morning.
So a little update on the county-owned parcels for auction. The last time I was here, we had one parcel that we were considering maybe, um, listing with a realtor. Uh, it can be listed with a realtor, however, the listing price cannot be less than ninety percent of the estimated market value. And with the estimated market value being twenty-five thousand, the minimum list price would be twenty-two thousand, five hundred or more. And then additionally, the property carries that special assessment of eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars, bringing the minimum total cost to a buyer of thirty-four thousand, um, not including the realtor fees. Comparable properties in the area are currently selling for between nineteen and twenty thousand. And then also selling this parcel may be a challenge due to the presence of wetland and the usable area on the parcel. We need to do a thirty-day publication period, and I had also handed out, um, a spreadsheet of starting bit, uh, prices so that you could see with the buyer's premium and the deed tax, special assessments, recording fees, et cetera, where a starting, starting price would lead you into a final price.
Michelle, did you have anything to add?
When you follow the auction process, you do have that leniency to consider all of the factors of the property to set a more reasonable price versus going through the broker. So I do want to make you aware, you probably already are aware of that, but just an FYI, you do get to lower that price. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, I, I just know we have a willing buyer, and he says that he can make it work at fifteen thousand, you know, because he's got to pay that eleven thousand, five hundred, twenty-two dollars and twelve cents.
Just going to ask, where the recommendation for the four thousand dollar sale price came from?
Right, you know, and as, as I'm looking at these numbers, personally, I would like to see it starting at three thousand. Now, we've, it's been on the books for how long already, since two thousand and twelve?
Yes.
So it's been on the books for quite a while, you know? But that's just my recommendation and my thoughts.
Mr. Chair, Christine, just to clarify, you said, uh, properties are currently in the nineteen to twenty thousand dollar range is what they're bringing?
In that area, I had checked with the St. Cloud Assessor, and that's what he had.
This one has a wetland on it.
Right.
Yeah, half of it basically is wetland, so it's a very small buildable lot.
That's, I was going to say is the buildable lot.
It's very small.
It's buildable, but you'd have to get creative.
It's got to be a slab on grade and everything, too, so.
And we've been sitting on it for thirteen years.
Yes. And, and unfortunately, we have to go through an auction, which I understand now. But I'd make a motion to make a minimum bid starting at three thousand.
And just to clarify, Commissioner Heinem, before, well, I'm sorry, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, there we go.
Just to clarify, Commissioner Heinem, um, three thousand for the sale price, but then recognizing that there's special assessments and that type of.
Correct, with all the added assessments.
So a three thousand dollar sale would cost approximately fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine bucks.
Correct, yep.
I'll leave my, you have a second, Mr. Chair?
Got a motion and a second for a three thousand dollar starting, along with the special assessments. Any other discussion?
Just a quick question. So if it starts at three thousand, how long is it out there for auction?
Um, we're going to, we would start it on December first, and it would be out for two weeks.
Okay.
That's what I need to know.
Mr. Chair, may I ask Christine a question? Will it be posted on the public surplus website?
Yes.
Thank you. Yep.
Another question. So when it's, uh, on that, uh, public web, website, do all the assessments and all the other fees get posted, too, so that everybody knows?
Yes, everything is on there under the buyer's terms.
Thank you.
Anything else? We got a motion and a second? All in favor?
I, I.
Opposed? Great. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
She has one more item.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to, um, update you on our Tyler tax system and just some of the issues we've been having recently. So if you get any phone calls, you're aware of them. Currently, our online portal does not have any instructions to taxpayers on how to enter their parcels in. I'm trying to work with them to get more clarification on there. Um, there's no kickback email to anybody if their payment is declined or doesn't process correctly. Only one owner can be printed on the receipt, and I've reached out to them to see if the second owner can be printed on there, and it cannot. The online portal does not allow for a phone number to be entered, so if there are any issues with payment, we have no way of contacting them. So it's kind of on the taxpayer to make sure that everything goes through. Just this past week, we had our tax day on, last Wednesday. We did have issues getting our ACH direct pay file to the bank. We managed to get it there with fifteen minutes to spare. The escrow files were an issue as well. There are things that are posting to the, the system, but we didn't receive the money from the bank actually, so we're, we're following through on that. It's just been a lot of issues, and our support team has been on vacation from October tenth to October twenty-eighth. So just if you get any phone calls, we're doing the very best we can.
Mr. Chair, what's the support been like? I mean, I realize they were gone, you just said that, but what's the support been?
Um, it's been questionable, I would say, on the tax side. The CAMA side, I know Brian has had phenomenal support. Our tax implementation consultant quit three days before we went live. So we ended up, our implementation consultant now is, um, part-time only. So he's only available until noon each day. So if we have issues after that, we don't have any, any support really. So.
In other words, your phone's been ringing off the hook?
Yeah, it's been busy. But people have been pretty good, understanding that it's a new system.
Sounds like it's got a ways to go.
Uh, yeah.
Right, and then, I mean, when we implemented the new system, I thought we were going to get all the support, right?
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
They didn't tell you they were going on vacation for that period of time?
No, not during Minnesota tax collection.
Yeah, right.
It was, and we're not the only county having problems. I had other counties reach out to me on tax day, whose ACH po, file pulled multiple times on their taxpayers' bank accounts, so.
Oh, boy.
Oh, man.
We didn't have that problem.
One would hope, even though they were on vacation, they'd still have support.
Yeah, correct.
Right.
Thanks for the update.
Yeah.
Wish I had better news.
Okay, anything else you want to report on?
Nope, that's all.
We would prefer good news instead of.
I'll try better next time.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we'll now move into Sandy Schoberg from Human Services.
I'll have Jada and Lindsay join us, actually. I think, Lindsay, are you given the, so Lindsay give an update?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm just here to give a brief update on the impact of the federal shutdown for the financial assistance programs. Currently, the programs we're looking at seeing affected are the SNAP, so the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, formerly known as food support, and then also the Family Cash Program, MFIP, which is the Minnesota Family Investment Program. In the event that the federal shutdown continues, the November benefits would not be available to recipients. DCYF, so the Department of Children, Youth and Families, is notifying recipients today via text and email regarding the potential of benefit stopping for November. As of Wednesday, um, October twenty-ninth, the MFIP cases processed on or after this date, we cannot approve. And then as of Saturday, November first, SNAP cases processed on or after that date, we cannot approve. Um, and then there's some additional steps that we've been, staff have been given direction to follow, um, to notify recipients, um, regarding these changes, um, adding some information to notices, um, and then verbally explaining these changes during interview processes for new applications. Um, just a couple statistics, um, currently, we have one thousand nine hundred thirty-one active SNAP cases in Benton County. In the month of September, um, there was four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars issued to SNAP benefits in Benton County. And then for MFIP, there's currently a hundred and seventy-eight active cases in Benton County. And in the month of September, we issued one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars to recipients in Benton County for MFIP. So that's what I had, just a brief update. Any questions?
Any questions? So what happens, I mean, if we go forward for a long period of time, um, are we going to have to have staff reductions or are we going to have to, what's your theory on that?
I'm not sure. I've never been through this. I don't know what to anticipate at this point. Hopefully, they get a resolution and we don't have to get to that point.
I mean, it's not much we can do right now.
No.
Something we have to watch.
Yep.
Just like everybody else.
Yeah.
Shouldn't wait.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the good news.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing as well?
Can I just add one thing as well? We also get reimbursement from the federal government as well for our staff who are working these programs. So obviously, that will be on halt as well. So we don't know if we'll be reimbursed backwards or not, as far as I know. Do you know something additional, can Mr. Heinon?
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So you said that, that reimbursement will stop the thirty-first of October?
I'm guessing we, we go, we bill quarterly, so.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure. As with most of the shutdowns with the state, in my experience, they usually go backwards and then go back and reimburse. We don't know if they'll go back and reimburse, but we would not get this until January. But there's a potential that during this month of October, we'll miss out on some reimbursement, and potentially in November as well.
So, Mr. Chair, Sandy, so is Oc, is October the first month of a quarter? I mean, I understand it is on a calendar year, but is that the way, okay?
Yes.
So, so the longer it moves on, the more costs the county could absorb, gonna have to absorb, or.
Correct. Or they might go back and reimburse us in full. We've been doing the work, but there's no way to know this at this point in time.
And nobody to tell you what they're gonna do.
Correct.
Yeah, they've been saying, all the information I've been receiving, too, from the federal government is that it's wishy-washy. Yes, they will, no, they won't. Every day, it's a different story.
In history, it has usually done that.
Right.
But I can't speak to that now.
Right.
Mr. Chair, Lindsay, the September numbers you gave us, are those fairly average? Are they up?
I would say they're average.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Guess not.
Thank you.
I have one.
Hold it.
I have one. So if they don't come back online, potential costs, do you know, or can you get that information and get back with the board on that? Potential costs from October to December to the county board?
Yes, I can get that for you.
Okay.
I think the other thing, of course, the major consideration, of course, for our public is, they won't be getting their food benefits and.
Their cash.
I mean, their cash. So, I mean, that's a pretty major thing. Well, we will be referring them to food shelves, et cetera, but that's, they're gonna be drained. So it is a major issue.
I think we heard yesterday, second harvest is only out three weeks.
Yes.
Got inventory?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that'll be gone in.
A week.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, 'cause there, it sounds like they're pulling early on even some of that from our meeting yesterday.
So, Mr. Chair, I will confer with Ashley to try and estimate how much admin resources we may lose.
Okay.
So we're kind of informed about that issue, kind of know the size of it. Yeah, yeah, rather than just kind of guessing, so I'll do that.
So what do we do to alleviate that loss?
That may be a policy decision that this county board may have to make, that's right. You know, I mean, fortunately, as we head into this, our reserves are, are good, good shape, but there's limits, of course.
Right.
Right, you know, you know. And it certainly would be concerning if we don't, if they don't retroback.
Right.
And simply, we've got to absorb that. That would be very concerning.
Well, that's my concern.
And my concern would be that even if they retroback, they're, you know, and if they don't, they're not gonna know until they reopen.
Correct.
So we may have already accumulated all that expense, and, I mean, we can't expect the employee, employees to work. And, well, we may get reimbursed for your time, and we may not.
Yeah.
That, you know, you can't get, we can't tell them, well, you might not get paid, even though they'll do the work. That ain't gonna work.
Well, fortunately, to his point, there's some fund, there's some reserves to deal with to start with.
Correct, yeah.
You know, of course, involving employees, we'd have to navigate the issues inside labor agreements, too.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
So we'll just be in limbo.
Correct.
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Now we'll go back to Monty.
Mr. Chair, we're gonna talk first about personnel policy revisions.
Yep.
And I'm gonna go off what's on your screen, and I'm going to refer to page numbers in the personnel policies, not, not like the, the packet page numbers. So if I may. So this is gonna, we're gonna start on page thirty-eight of the personnel policies. And before I game this chair, there's really three big issues to address we're here this morning. The first is our proposal to eliminate the, the leave donation program. The second is to make revisions to our Earn Sick and Save Time policy. That's number two. And then third is to put into place policies regarding Minnesota paid leave, or PFML, Paid Family Medical Leave. There's different acronyms that people use. I kind of like Minnesota paid leave, so we'll call it that. Okay. So those three buckets that we're gonna talk about this morning. Okay. First one, again, is on page thirty-eight. We've had in place for a long time a policy allowing employees to donate their own paid time off or, or vacation leave to another employee. And Commissioner Heinon and Commissioner Pop have heard this issue over and over in labor negotiations. So if I'm missing a key point, please add. Over time, we've discovered it's extremely complex and difficult to administer. It sometimes requires employees to divulge awkward personal issues in their life regarding their health. That's very awkward and unpleasant. I think there's been concerns about, well, some people get donations and some people don't. I think really what triggered this was the realization is that January first, Minnesota paid leave starts, where people have accessed up to twenty weeks of paid leave. And I think our conclusion is that, well, we don't really see that the donation program will be even needed anymore. So we've had some success with some groups negotiating that out of collective bargain agreements, and this would apply then to non-union employees. So Commissioner Heinon and Pop, anything you wish to add from, we've heard, we discussed this extensively in labor negotiations, so.
I just wanted to make sure that it's for non-union employees.
That's true.
Because one union is bringing up this yet.
Yeah.
So it's non-union.
You know, and, and we may not negotiate it out of all agreements, and, you know, that's okay. We'll take it one by one, and perhaps over time, as employees see the benefit of paid leave, they'll say, look, you know, we don't need the donation program anymore. So, and that's the important point, Commissioner Heinon, is that the personnel policies apply to non-union employees.
Non-union.
But here I should add, though, with this caveat, they apply to union employees when the union contract is silent on an issue.
Right.
So again, for example, you won't find in the, a union contract, lots of specifics about mileage reimbursement, or, or, or you, for example, the remote work policy. That's not in any labor agreement. It's in the personnel policy. So the personnel policies do apply to union members when the CBA is silent on an issue. All right. That is page thirty-eight and forty-three. Again, we, we could donate either PTO or vacation. Let's move on to Earn Sick and Save Time, and that starts on page forty-six. Okay. Here's the big issue with Earn Sick and Save Time. Initially, based upon the advice of our labor attorney, they said, under guidance from the Department, Minnesota Department of Labor, the first forty-eight hours of PTO or sick leave you use will count as your E S S T. So in other words, the first of the year, you use forty-eight hours, you've used all your E S T, you're done. Well, as Susan Hansen has told us, the Minnesota legislature changed the law to say, okay, all of your sick leave and all of your PTO now counts as E S S T. So if, so instead of having this just forty-eight hours, if you've got, let's just say, for example, a thousand hours of sick leave, the E S S T rules apply. So what, what does that mean? I tried to give you, so let's back up for a moment. With PTO, you can use that for any reason. What this really affects, though, is sick leave. So the rules regarding sick leave, I'll use the analogy, are like this. The P, the E S S T rules are like this. In other words, they're more flexible, they're more broad. So I've tried to give you a few examples of where the E S S T rules differ from the sick leave rules. Here's an example I've highlighted. You can use E S S T for the enclosure of the employee's place of business due to weather or other public emergency. You can use E S S T due to domestic abuse, sexual assault, and stalking of the employee. You can use E S S T if your, your family member's school or place, for example, daycare is closed due to weather. And you can also use it for if a family member is also experiencing domestic abuse, sexual assault, and stalking. Also, you can use E S S T for bereavement leave. And this is, and that definition is right here, to make arrangements for, to attend funeral service or memorial, and so on. So these are instances where E S S T is more broad than our sick leave policy. But the law says, okay, if you have sick leave on the books, the E S S T rules apply. And again, that issues, we've discussed extensively in labor negotiations. So basically, Mr. Chair, is we strike out all that first forty-eight hours of business, and we say employee balances, a paid time off, or sick leave may be used in accordance with the rules governing E S S T. Yeah. And actually, this law is on the books today. It's not something that starts January first. It's on the books today. So this is, this is cleanup for our E S S T policy. Alrighty, let's move on now to paid leave, starting on page fifty-one. Oh, I forgot one issue to mention on the E S S T. This is a discretionary issue that employers may put into policy or negotiate into labor agreements. And it says, basically, if you're an employee in a, in a critical public safety position, we can deny the use of E S S T. So for example, let's just say you're a dispatcher, or you're a snowplow driver. We can say, because of a weather emergency, we can deny you the use of E S S T. So as we've been negotiating with our groups, we're attempting to get this language in all of our CBAs, and it all should, also should apply to non-union employees as well. So again, it gives the employee the authority to deny the U S S, use of E S S T to those critical positions during a public emergency or a weather event. So, 'cause without it, for example, let's just say, again, you're a snowplow driver. If you didn't have this in policy or CBA, and a, a snowplow driver could rightfully say, you know, I have a legitimate E S S T use, I need to be off, even though the roads need plowing. So again, hopefully, we can see that in all of our labor agreements, so. Alrighty, scrolling on down. So Minnesota paid leave begins on fifty-one, on page fifty-one. So I'm gonna pause just for a moment, Mr. Chair, and kind of talk big picture. My goal in, in drafting this policy was not to describe everything about how Minnesota paid leave works.
Right.
That's beyond the scope of personnel policies. It's a very large, and largely unknown, and complex program. So we're not gonna attempt to explain it in our personnel policies. What we're gonna do, and I've kind of said this over and over again, is when employees have questions about it, we're gonna say, please call the Minnesota paid line, paid leave helpline, or visit their website. We do, in this policy, attempt to give a broad overview of Minnesota paid leave, and I can cover a few of those things here. So Minnesota paid leave begins January first. It provides twelve leave, twelve weeks of leave for your own serious health condition. You can also get an additional twelve weeks, and it's described for the purposes, one, two, three, and four here, bonding leave, active duty leave, leave to care for another person, and safety leave. But the combined total cannot be more than twenty weeks between the two. Not more than twenty weeks between the two. You get job protections after ninety days of employment with your, with the county. That's, again, flowing straight from the law. It has broad application, as it says here, it's available to full-time, part-time employees, seasonal and temporary employees, and elected officials. The only, as we've learned from various, we've gone to many seminars on this, about the only type of employees that are excluded are seasonal employees in the hospitality industry. That's it. Otherwise, you're, you're covered. And it's job protected leave. It's, so it's kind of like, if you, you're familiar with F M L A, that gives you that job protection to return to the same or equivalent job after you've used your eligible leave. Talk a little bit about the enrollment process. It's, it's gonna be totally online, so employees go online to the state website, they begin the application process. Our role is somewhat limited. We do some verification that, yes, this person works here, how many hours did they work for you, what's the rate of pay, things of that nature. Shannon's gonna be our PFML administrator handling those. So we do some, again, verification, but that's really the limit of our role. So this gets into, so why do we have the policy in our personnel policies? Well, we need to address some discretionary areas where employers can establish their own unique policies. So what I have here is consistent with what we've been pursuing in labor negotiations. It's very consistent. It comes from guidance from Susan Hansen. All right. The first one, I tried to highlight with this sort of like, I'm not sure what color you described that. It's not yellow, it's a, I'm not sure, what is that color, Beth? As a matter of county policy, F M L A, or Minnesota paid leave, shall run concurrently with any PFML. And the notion there is, you don't want the leaves to stack. In other words, you, you know, you wouldn't want someone, for example, to have their twenty weeks of PFML, and then there's another twelve weeks of F M L A on top of that. So you would have someone gone for a very long time. So it's within employers' discretion to require that these leaves run concurrently. They run concurrently. The next area of discretionary is about what's called topping off. So employers can allow their employees to top off their paid leave wages using their accrued paid time off, vacation, sick leave, up to one hundred percent of what their normal pay is. And as we've been negotiating, we've been proposing that. Actually, employers could deny that. I'm not sure really why they would.
No.
Uh, but employers could deny that. And I should stress is, so this policy would allow that, but employees don't have to, though. They can say, look, you know, I wanna just preserve my PTO, my sick leave, my vacation, and I'll just take, you know, the paid benefit. So they don't have to use any wage replacement to top off their paid leave wages.
Otherwise, they would be at sixty-six percent, right?
It varies. I think the max is sixty-six, down to around fifty percent.
Okay.
As, as your income level grows, the percentage of wage replacement falls. Oh, that's, so that's one more discretionary issue. Another is the, the subject of intermittent. So PFML can be used intermittently, but the law says employers can prescribe some policies around how that, how that's done. So here's the proposed policies, and again, I adapted this from guidance from Susan. It's gotta be scheduled. So in other words, I can't just say, well, tomorrow, I'm gonna go take, pay leave. It's gotta be scheduled at least fourteen days in advance. You have to have fourteen-day notice of the scheduled change. It runs concurrently F M, F M L A. And we can also establish a cap of how much can be used intermittently. And this says, this, this goes with what the statute allows, four hundred and eighty hours can be used intermittently. And the remaining twelve, excuse me, the remaining eight weeks would have to be used continuously. We have folks that use F M L A intermittently now, and I will admit, it's definitely a challenge to track. So this will add another layer of complexity to already complex tracking when, when folks use leave intermittently. But that does occur now, where it's used intermittently. Someone perhaps has a, a chronic condition that, you know, that they, they almost essentially need that form of leave almost permanently. I believe, Mr. Chair, that is the final of the three discretionary policy issues that employers can enact inside a paid leave program. And happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions? Mr. Chair, just for clarification, Monty, the old sick leave, what, we've been on PTO since twenty eleven?
Twelve.
Twenty-twelve? Okay. Approximately, how many employees are on the old, roughly?
I didn't think you would ask me.
I'm sorry. I'll, I'll get that answer, I'll get the answer to you.
That's fine. And, and did you say that that sick leave bank is included in the E S S T?
Right. So again, if I've got a thousand hours of sick leave, it all counts as E S S T now, yeah, under the rules of E S S T. So it becomes much more, I wouldn't say much more, but it comes more, more broad in the, in the ways you can use it for. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll let you know, I'll let you all know how many folks are still on the old sick leave system. And, Mr. Chair, that's what we've got for you.
Questions? Complicated?
Yeah, yeah.
Fortunately, I've been through this with a couple of other boards I sit on already.
Okay.
If I can just add one last comment, is I know with Shannon's assistance and Emily's, we plan to have some sessions for employees and supervisors on paid leave and we'll do our best to educate folks about how the system works, but we're all learning as this goes along. And I, I won't promise it's gonna be perfect, we'll do our best. I think that's, everyone's in the same boat, we're just trying to learn how this is gonna work. So, it's only through experience will we know actually how it's gonna work, so.
And I think you've explained that pretty well during negotiations.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, this is a action item?
Action item. Yes, sir. Looking for a motion to approve the revised personnel policies as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, approve the revised resolution.
Personnel policy.
Personnel resolution. Other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Okay, one more item, Monty?
Yes, sir. Alright, non, non-union employee health insurance. Well, we're almost to the start of open enrollment, it starts in about a week or so. And for folks to make informed decisions about what they wanna choose, we need to tell them what the, the rates might be, the whole premium structure and plan structure. So, there's been quite a detour in health insurance, so bear with me. About a month ago or so, the Benefits Advisor Committee came to you and presented this plan for a new four-tier structure. Bold, innovative, a great, great recommendation. So, initially, when we talked to M M A, we asked the question, because we kind of thought, you know, probably won't have all of our labor agreements done by January first, so we could have some folks on the old system and some on the new. So, initially, we said, hey, can Blue Cross Blue Shield administer that old system, new system? Initially, the M M A said yes. So, we asked again and maybe a couple more times, are you really sure, are they really sure? And upon further digging, the answer was no. They cannot administratively manage with our group, folks on old and folks on new. So, in negotiations, what we're attempting to do is, is bring onboard the new four-tier system in twenty-seven, which leaves us with the existing two-tier system. So, that's what got us to this today. Also, too, you may wonder, well, you know, what if you get settlements during twenty-six? Can people then enroll then? The answer is no. To preserve the pre-tax nature of our deductions, that you can only switch amongst these high deductible plans with a qualifying event, marriage, kid, that sort of thing. It's gonna have to wait until twenty-seven. I think we're all disappointed, but again, I, I don't wanna diminish, you know, again, the bold nature of what the B A C brought to you all and, and very innovative, creative, and I hope someday we can get to the four-tier system, so. So, Mr. Chair, asking you to consider what's in your packet, and if I may offer a few explanations. So, when we, we posed the M M A, well, folks, we're gonna have to stay with the two-tier, two-tier system, is it still gonna be a three percent funding increase? And they said, no, it really needs to be five, and here's the reason why. The four-tier system also included this new, what I call kind of a super high deductible plan, five thousand, ten thousand. They made certain assumptions about employees moving to that one, which would reduce the funds costs. In other words, employers are gonna be paying more potentially out of pocket themselves with the super high deductible. The plan would pay less, so the funding need was lower. Well, we're not gonna do the super high deductible plan in twenty-six. So, instead, B M M A says, well, your funding increase really needs to be five percent, not three. That's the first thing. So, again, staying, I'm going through the agenda item, staying with the two-tier structure, and this is part of the recommendations which is flowing from labor negotiations, is currently the county contributes eighty percent of the single plan and seventy-five percent of the family. What's been flowing from labor negotiations, though, is increasing the single contribution from eighty to eighty-five, from eighty to eighty-five. So, that's improvement there for the single. And I, if I could back up for a moment, as, as we've heard in labor negotiations, it's quite common for employers to pay most, if not all, of the single plan, ninety to a hundred percent. It's very common. So, our eighty percent was kind of an outlier. So, we've heard that in labor negotiations. Moving on down, this, again, flowing from negotiations, is to increase the contribution for the V I B A and H S A family from two fifty to two eighty-three, and the goal there was get that close to thirty-four hundred. So, basically, that's the number. It's thirty-three ninety-six, I think. Now, we left out the cents, but it gets you to thirty-four hundred, which is half the, this, the deductible. Moving on down the list is, this also would increase those deductibles to thirty-four hundred for single and sixty-eight hundred for family. You may recall, we're obliged to increase the H S A single to retain that concept of called an embedded deductible at thirty-four hundred for twenty-six. So, and this really is adapting the B A C recommendation to make the V I B A deductible the same and then the family deductible to be, to be double the single. So, we're, we're adapting a, a bit of the B A C recommendation here to move the deductibles to thirty-four hundred and sixty-eight hundred. Mr. Chair, I have included in the packet then what the table would look like for actual contributions, V I B A, H S A, single and family. You can see the employee contributions in the green and then county contributions. For reference, I included the current two thousand twenty-five, so just give you a sense of, of where employee contributions would go. I, that's my handwriting in red. You can see, for example, the current sick, employee contribution for single is one sixty-eight thirty-eight. That's gonna go to one thirty-two sixty. So, again, from one sixty-eight thirty-eight to one thirty-two sixty. So, a nice improvement for those with single coverage. And on the, the H S A from one fifty-four to one twenty-one. The family, the family, because that stays at seventy-five percent, that does go up a bit. On, on the V I B A from five ninety-nine to six twenty-nine and the H S A from five forty-nine to five seventy-seven. So, I'll pause there. Questions, thoughts, especially from Rich Hein and Mr. Pop, you've been hearing this a lot in labor negotiations.
I think after.
Questions or for me?
Number of times we've got it.
Yeah, yeah, we, we don't, we don't like it probably, but we understand it and we have to do it. Monty, who set the thirty-four thousand dollars for the deductible? Thirty-four hundred? Thirty-four hundred?
Yep. This is adapting a recommendation from the B A C.
Okay.
Is they had recommended that the, that the V I B A deductible mirror the H S A one, and then that the, the family one would just be double the single. That's where we're, we're taking that lead from, is from the B A C recommendation, yeah.
And you can see it's an additional ninety-five thousand on the county's budget.
Right.
Well, Mr. Chair, that's, that was gonna be my question. You really only have two options here. You're gonna take out a fund balance.
Right.
Or we're gonna make some type of reduction.
Right.
Because we're not gonna raise the levy.
Right.
So.
Right, that's really your source.
So, what's the reduction options? Do we have reduction options that you're thinking of at all?
I don't have any in the moment, right?
What's the timeline on approval of this? When do you need this approved?
We, we really need it today, unfortunately, because open enrollment starts.
Twenty-fourth of October.
Yeah. Next week, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it closes November eleventh.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth? Okay, I had those dates wrong. Thank you.
And this is kind of what we proposed to the unions yesterday, too.
Yeah.
So.
We're trying to be as consistent as we can, you know, with, with what we're seeing in negotiations, yep.
Yep, I, I mean, we don't, other than the ninety-five thousand coming out of reserves, I don't see a lot of leeway to move with the timeframe that we're in.
As of now, it'd have to come out of reserves.
Right.
Uh, you know, Mr. Chair, just one last comment is, I guess I always try and keep this in mind, as you make your health insurance better, so to speak, you make yourself a more attractive employer in an extremely competitive labor market. So, as we move closer to the prevailing trends, especially with single coverage, that can help us as we're, you know, Emily's working to attract applicants and hire people, so I try and keep those things in mind.
And we did hear yesterday, and specifically from a neighboring county, that they went to a hundred percent on their single coverage.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, basically, they were hoping to get more contract settlements by, they have a larger number of singles and that's what they were hoping.
Did they say how they paid for it? Did they prepare for that to propose budget or are they taking reserves?
And we do have probably one of the lowest health insurance increase thanks to our.
Self-funding?
Self-funding deal that we did many years ago. So, I mean, what, someone, we're talking eleven, twelve percent, and we're at, well, three, five now.
So, this does need approval today.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll be the bad guy.
Okay.
Motion to adopt non-union employee health insurance for two thousand and twenty-six as presented.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chair, for discussion, I, I understand the need and the timeline and I understand that it's probably gonna need to come out of fund balance, but at some point, I think we better have some discussion about some potential reductions. I mean, this is a hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know when we're gonna do that, if we're gonna wait till our goal session, but.
Well, I know, Mr. Chair, so, of course, we'll have at least one final budget committee the whole early December and that'd be a great time to talk about, you know, what could be done to, to even things out, yeah.
So, then I guess the ask would be to include that in that discussion, be prepared with some potential reductions.
You bet, yep.
Comment well received. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Do we have, uh, Community Health Board? We'll recess the county board and go to Community Health Board.
We'll call over the Ben County Community Health Board. Note that Commissioner Gopinski is gone. Approve or amend the agenda? Do we have anything to add?
Good morning, Commissioners, I do not.
Okay.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Consent agenda item one and two, what would you like to do with that? I'd like to pull number two.
Yeah.
Move for approval of consent agenda item number one, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second to approve agenda item number one? Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Courtney, you wanna talk a little bit about this COVID funding reinstatement?
Yes, so, we did get an email from the Minnesota Department of Health, just letting us know that it's being reinstated. I don't know all the details on the why behind it, but they had asked if the, if we had interest in utilizing any of the funds in reinstating. We did email M D H with just some ideas of what we had for it, most being related to the new building, potential costs related to an immunization clinic or a med clinic and just some items, potentially like a fridge, just different things like that, wall mounts, exam chairs, things like that. So, at this point, that's all that we foresee utilizing it for. Yeah, any questions on that?
So, when the funding was cut, about two weeks later, I got notification from the federal and the state that they were possibly going to restart this again. And this is what they did. They restarted it again. I think they were looking at where all the funds were being used when they shut it down.
Yeah.
And a lot of them were being used inappropriately.
Thankfully, we did not have any staffing time or any big projects going on, we were just kind of utilizing it for potential immunization type things and updating some of that kind of stuff, too, for the new building costs.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson.
Courtney, this contract expires on March thirty-first already.
It's very quick.
So, are you thinking you can utilize these dollars that fast?
Potentially. We had some items lined up previously before it kind of closed down, so we already had some, maybe quick, some ideas of how to utilize it. So, that's kind of what we were hoping to do prior to that March date.
That's a large sum of dollars to be used up by that time, correct?
It is.
Most likely, it wouldn't be the full amount.
Right.
Okay, so then the rest has to go back?
Correct. And I believe it's an invoice basis, so it's not that we're getting the full amount, it's just we would invoice for what we would purchase.
So, you could invoice up to seven hundred thirty-seven thousand?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, so when you talk about items for the new building, are you in a position to be able to purchase those and invoice those or whatever it is you plan on doing before March thirty-first?
We would look at that before purchasing, but yes, that would be, that would be the goal. And anything that wouldn't be able to be invoiced before that, we would not be able to purchase or not plan to purchase.
Courtney, could you get an example of what you could use this for, like the WIC clinics and all that?
Yeah, so just some items that we had got approved from the state. So, I'll just kind of run through, so exam chairs, sharps, wall mounts, vaccine fridge, lockable medical supply cabinets, M supplies, storage and organization type items. Let's see, staff medical chair, temperature, like monitoring devices. Some of this stuff could just go not necessarily directly to M's, but potentially doubling as like a WIC, in, WIC items as well. Signage, vaccine talking points, materials for the walls, floor mats, safety equipment, sharps, things like that.
And this was already a pre-approved by?
Yep, so Jaclyn had emailed M D H previously just to ask if these items will be covered under that and it was approved, so.
And, Mr. Chair, have you seen the list of suspended or barred vendors for this?
I have, I have not. There might, Jaclyn might have.
Yeah.
She's on vacation right now.
It just, you know, we're, we're not a large county and this is a large amount of money. And imagine what's gone out and it's coming from an organization that's under, you know, Department of Health, Human Services, that's under so much scrutiny, why would they push this much money out? It just don't make sense.
I wanted to mention, Mr. Chair, to, to Courtney, that if, if we need to acquire items that are intended for the new building, I'm sure we can find a place to store it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can come up with something, yeah.
I mean, we don't wanna give up so-called free money, but it just seems kind of crazy.
It does.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on that? With that, I'll approve agenda item number two, motion to approve, sorry.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second? Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries, thank you. Courtney, I also ask you to give us an update.
Yeah, related to WIC. Yep, so our Women, Infants and Children's Program is a nutrition program that we've offered here at Benton County for quite some time. So, at this point, there has been no changes to public health or the WIC program and how we're running everything has remained the same. I will say, M D H has updated the amount of communication and meetings related to this during the federal shutdown. So, every Wednesday, we have a meeting. There's been some national WIC meetings as well that myself and our coordinator has attended. So, what we know right now, so this would be as of last week, because our next meeting is tomorrow. So, as of last week, on the sixteenth, M D H received funding from tariff revenues, so three million dollars. I should clarify, so there's two different separate, like funding sources. So, there's food funds, which is basically for the families. So, when they get their benefits, it's for like the milk, eggs, cheese, yogurt, that's what's supplied under the WIC and some more items as well, but those are just a few examples. And then there's also what they call N S A, which is Nutrition Service Administration Funds or Administrative Funds for Staffing. And so, my understanding that those two funding sources don't mix, they don't cover one or the other, they are very separate. So, there was three million dollars in the food funds for the families and then one point three million dollars for the N S A or Nutrition Services Administration costs. So, with that, it would have lasted us through mid-November. After that time, it's kind of the unknown, similar maybe to the SNAP benefits where we don't know what will happen after that, it's just a wait and see kind of, kind of thing. What I do know is from our grant cycle for WIC goes October first through September thirtieth every year, that's the fiscal year for, for the WIC grants. We, we invoice about twenty, twenty-five to twenty-seven thousand dollars a month to cover our staffing cost. So, that's what we know at this point, but anything after, after that, we, it's uncertain.
Questions, Board?
Mr. Chair, how many, about how many clients? Mr. Chair, how many, about how many clients people are served with WIC, roughly?
So, on average, we're at around eight hundred, um, participants, so that includes like the children and, uh, like the, the mom as well, or the parent, so.
Thank you.
And that's per month.
Well, thanks for that clarification.
Yep.
Any other questions for Courtney? Thank you, Courtney, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yep, have a good day.
Thank you.
We will now adjourn our meeting at ten twenty-five and turn it over to the board chair.
Okay, we're down to.
Ten twenty-eight.
Commissioner, meeting updates?
Mr. Chair, do you wanna finish our meeting or recess for a few minutes and get into our call and come back and finish up? What would you like to?
That's what I, Mr. Chair.
We've got people here.
I would recommend that.
Okay.
Recess it in, two minutes, come back and start the call?
Start the call in a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Monty, can we remain here?
Um, of course.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that would be fine, that'd make this a little.
Is Chris?
Uh, I believe Chris was gonna monitor the meeting and head over.
Okay, so we'll recess for a couple of minutes, and then we'll.